Okay, my clock has turned six thirty and I see that we have a forum of the city council present in the room. So I will call the meeting of the city council, City of Hillsborough to order. Uh, first item up on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Uh, under consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling three hundred sixty-three thousand ninety-three dollars fourteen cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Any questions regarding the vouchers? Next, we have minutes from the April sixteen twenty twenty-four meeting, which seems like a while ago, and it has been.
Been.
Uh, did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Any questions or corrections to the minutes? Uh, we also have CDBG and HEAL vouchers totaling a hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred seventy dollars thirty-nine cents. Did everyone receive copies of those? And next, we have parts from Core and Main for daycare center fire line for eleven thousand twenty-five dollars. Everyone get those? And finally, we have HVAC replacement at the reservoir pump station for eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-five. Were there any questions regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I accept a motion to approve consent agenda as submitted. Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, we are gonna make a slight adjustment here in the agenda this evening, and we are going to go next to our first public comment opportunity, and I believe we have some members of the Hillsborough United Methodist Church here to address the council. Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, please.
Do that.
You're just gonna leave him and leave him by himself?
I'm for moral support.
Alright. Yeah, for those of you that don't know me, I think you're even here, I'm Gary Andrews. Uh, the Hillsborough United Methodist Church has asked me to come over. We always have had fireworks at the church, uh, right around the Fourth of July. We have pie, ice cream. Last year, we had a rather large crowd back there. This year, that falls on June thirtieth. And I know that your fireworks ordinance starts on July first, is that correct, Matt?
That is correct, sir.
What we are asking, whether we could get a variance on that where they could shoot fireworks off the night of June thirtieth?
So, yeah, uh, the way the ordinance is set up, the fireworks runs from the first until the fifth. Uh, and then we also have time over the New Year's holiday as well. Uh, there is a, a section in there that allows the city council to make exceptions for that for community-based events or other events. Um, they just missed it by one day this time, and that's just how the calendar fell. Uh, I did speak with Fire Chief Ben Stankety about it. He had no problems with it. They've never had an issue over there. They're always well-prepared, and there's, I think, firemen, or at least in the area, most of the time, if not there.
Yeah.
Um, and so he, he had no qualms with this and, and wouldn't have any problem if it moved forward, so. I don't see any reason to say no. It's kind of an established community thing, um.
It's not saying this year, it just fell on the calendar where it fell out of those five days. Normally, it's within that, we haven't had to worry about it. So.
Any questions for Mr. Andrews or Mr. Styles on this matter? Hearing none, I, I would certainly be open to a motion to approve the exception for the Hillsborough United Methodist Church to, uh, have their fireworks event on June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Somebody care to make that motion?
Well.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate all the stuff the Methodist Church does for the community too.
Thank you.
Yep.
We'll serve y'all pie and ice cream again.
Alright.
Have a good evening. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to address the council at this particular opportunity? Hearing none, we'll close the first public comment opportunity and we'll move into, uh, uh, section C, which is, uh, Crystal Hinden from Ranson Financial is here along with Tristan Coe. It's here and some other members of the, uh, of the, uh, H, H four C.
Yeah.
That's right.
Those broke each other.
We're doing the public here.
We are. We're gonna do that first, but I'm just, I'm just trying to tee it all up here, sorry.
No, you're fine.
Yep. So the first thing we're gonna do this evening under, under this section is we're going to hold a public hearing for the revised CDBG request for one twenty-six North Main. And, uh, Ms. Hinden, if you would, uh, kind of take us through that if you wouldn't mind?
Absolutely. So we have held one public hearing for this. We are redoing this public hearing. So once we turned in the application to CDBG, um, they came back and said, because of the age of the building, we want you to do some asbestos testing and come back with a report. While we were off doing the testing, they had changed the amount of dollars that we can apply for for the commercial recap. It used to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, now it's three hundred thousand dollars. But in order for us to go ahead and apply for the three hundred thousand dollars, we have to re-sign some of the forms that we already did, and we have to withhold the public hearing that says we're going to apply for that much. So that's why we're holding another public hearing tonight. So we will be, um, applying for CDBG, uh, which is the Kansas Department of Commerce, their Small Cities Community Development Block Grant. That's a lot of words, so we like to call them CDBG. So this is gonna be for one twenty-six North Main. Um, we are going to be rehabilitating the building and turning it into an event center. Uh, we will be, I'll read some of the things that we're gonna do, uh, demo, little bit of demolition, um, and repair the elevator shaft, patch some flooring, stabilizations of some walls, point repair masonry of the walls, um, install stairs, install restrooms, um, domestic water, sanitary system, uh, some electrical and plumbing, install paint and patch some walls, install ramp, um, interior point masonry, metal ceiling, we're gonna install and match some of the metal ceiling that's already there. Uh, we will be installing and fixing the kitchen as well, and, um, the sopit, uh, window restoration mobilization. So the total project cost is gonna be three hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-three dollars. We're gonna request a grant for three hundred thousand dollars. Do you guys have any questions?
Just for clarity's sake, this matter has come before the council in the past. The council has approved the CDBG request for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as, as Crystal said, it was a matter of the state, you know, allowing that, that request to increase is why it's back here today. And, uh, so, you know, really, it's, in some respects, it's a formality, but we need to go through and, uh, and do the, all the required steps. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to comment on this matter? Okay. Hearing none, we're gonna close the public hearing. And, uh, we will move into, uh, consideration of the revised CDBG amount for three hundred thousand dollars for one twenty-six North Main. And would somebody care to make that motion? Councilman by, moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we're on to the second.
Sorry, Mayor. We have two resolutions.
Oh, yeah.
No, you're fine. I didn't interrupt, but, um, so the first resolution is gonna be the legal authority.
Oh.
And that gives you the, um, it just says that the, the city has the legal authority to apply to CDBG, and it also gives the mayor the authority to sign the extra paperwork that goes with it.
Apologize, I got the, the cart in front of the horse here.
So there's a, the legal authority amount has changed, is that correct?
Yeah, and it just updates for that three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. And so, is, was it another important piece to this, that you have an agreement in place with, uh, TD, TD Drigger's Development?
Yes.
Uh, with regards to how this is structured, so that they're, they are the ones that are going to be providing the money, it's not the city. So we're, again, this is where we're acting to pass through effectively this, uh, kind of like we do with the childcare center, so. Uh, you do have two resolutions, resolution number, for the first one, the legal authority is twenty-four, two, two thousand twenty-four dash oh four.
Excuse me, so these are resolutions?
Yeah, these are official, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
Two thousand twenty-four dash oh four.
Okay, so we need to step back and consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh four, which gives us the legal authority to authorize the pass-through of the CDBG grant, not, is that what we're talking about?
Yep.
Which ultimately will not cost any.
Won't cost us.
Won't cost the taxpayer.
Will cost them, uh, the, the plenty, plenty of money for that project, but yes.
Okay, so, as a, since we have a resolution that is not a voice vote, that is a, that is a poll, we'll poll the council for that vote. So would somebody care to make that motion to approve that resolution, like by? Councilman McCarty, would you like to have a second again?
Yeah.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, and I will poll the council, Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty. Councilman by.
Yes.
Okay, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero four is hereby approved, and the mayor will sign. The second resolution is?
Two thousand twenty-four dash oh five, which is, uh, declaring the building blighted with respect to the CDBG program. Um, and so we, we've had Ben Stankety, the building inspector, has done a, a building inspection work way back when, first time around. Uh, it's still blighted, uh, hasn't changed.
If we passed this resolution before, but since it's been about seven months, we're up doing all of it, we just thought it was a good time to go ahead and update that resolution, so they're not afraid of the date that we did it the last time.
Somebody care to make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five? Councilman McCarty, second. Councilman Wilkins, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Hey, resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero five is hereby approved, and the mayor will sign. Now. Are we ready to move forward? Excellent. Excellent, thank you very much. So the second, uh, area that we're considering under section C is consideration of bids for the community daycare center project. And I believe we have some of the H four C folks here with us this evening. Thank you all for coming and for your support of this project. So, Hinden?
Um, so I should have wrote the date down before I walked in here. My apologies, um, we did open the bids for the H four C. Um, the lowest responsible bid is the one that we need to proceed with. And, um, after doing all the background checking, crunching the numbers, uh, we've come up with Weens Co- and Company Construction Inc. Was our lowest responsible bidder. Um, so at this point, Mayor, we would need to ha- make a motion to have an approval of the bids for Weens and Company Construction Inc.
So we're approving the bid of?
Approving the bid. I wouldn't say you're accepting it. I don't think the city is accepting it, but if the, if that's, if you approve the H four C's acceptance of that bid, yeah.
And the reason why we're bringing it to you guys is, um, we did apply for CDBG, and only, uh, cities and counties can apply to CDBG, and so technically, with the state, you are the owner of the CDBG grant, and so this is just one of the things that they have to go through, is you guys will make your motion that you guys are going to approve the bids. H four C will also make their own motion, and, and it'll be in both minutes, and we'll send it off.
And this is not in the form of a resolution? Okay. So would somebody care to make that motion to approve the bid by Weens and Company? Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second? Councilman by, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Um, so our, our next thing to go through, did they all get a copy of the contract? No? Okay. Um, and I did print it out, cause it's a hundred and three pages long, so we'll just go over it a little bit. Um, a few things that your attorney and he can discuss this as well. Um, it did say that, that the city of Hillsborough was the owner, um, so his suggestion would be for us to change that it's for the H four C is, will be the owner. Um, CDBG does make us go through the city for this, so what we'll do is the same thing as, as with the other ones, or with the bids. We'll come to you guys with it. Uh, what we're looking for is basically a motion that's gonna say change over to the, instead of the city of Hillsborough, change it to the H four C. Um, and you guys will tell me exactly how you wanted them to say that, approve.
You can approve H four C moving ahead with that contract, if that's, if you wanna make a motion of that.
That way, we have it in your minutes, and then the H four C will also take it to their board, and discuss it and, and make a motion as well.
Oh, but, so changing owners isn't gonna change anything going into the process?
No, it shouldn't. Um, and technically, since they own the building, it should be fine, but we do need to have it in the minutes that you are gonna go ahead and approve them. And I, you know, if you want, we can also put in their pending your approval, we can send it to you after.
We can do that too. I mean, obviously, there's some things we're gonna have to work out with, with us and, and Ranson's group, but worrying with the state to make sure that it's all right, but that was, that was just the first thing I saw when it came to the second.
The state does have a lot of hoops for us to jump through, and so.
Sometimes they're not reasonable.
Yeah, that's right.
That's true.
Okay. Mr. Barson?
Yes. So when would the ownership change to H four C? Is that before the?
They already own the building, and so basically, we're just changing the contract to say the contract will be
It's the contract.
Between the construction company and the H four C.
And that has to happen before construction start?
Oh, I would think so.
Yes, so we can have signed contracts.
That require another meeting?
Here?
No, cause so.
Not here. Not here.
Yeah, what we're asking.
H four C's already approved
Mm-hmm.
bids for them, so they, they would be able, once the contract is formalized, they could just sign it.
So there's no holdup at all, no, no timeframe?
Shouldn't be.
No.
Signs to go.
Yeah, as soon as I got a clean contract, we'll be.
Yep.
Good to go.
Any other questions? So in terms of, of the motion, I'm not sure how we wanna state that, that, so the city is going to?
You just say that the city is moving to approve the form of the contract between Weens Construction and H four C. That makes sense.
Pending your approval.
Pending my approval.
And CDBG's approval, I would say, cause they may come back and say, eh, let's put you both on their foot.
Worked for that.
Yeah.
Hey, would somebody care to make that motion? Council, Councilman by, moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins will second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Again, thanks everybody for being here, and, uh, and again, the support for this important project.
Let's have any other questions?
Do you have anything?
Here with our two projects?
I just wanna thank for, yeah, I just wanna thank for the city council's supports for the Hillsborough Community Childcare Center. Um, you've been a valuable partner with us, and I've done it without the support that you have been able to give, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Very good.
Thanks again. Okay, we are now ready to move into our business section, which is, uh, has a little lengthy this evening, but we're gonna file right through. First item up is consideration of ordinance thirteen ninety-one designating main, not secondary, but main trafficways. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is all, kind of, you have four actions that are tied to the same thing. Uh, this is with regard to the general obligation bonds for Adams Street, Lincoln Street, and Wilson Street. Um, so the first thing is ordinance thirteen ninety-one, so we have, um, we have a, have a list of main trafficways, uh, and it's tied to our charter ordinance, which allows us to issue debt related to the construction and maintenance of main trafficways. Uh, so in order to do a general bond, Geo bond financing, we have to have those designated, uh, streets that we're gonna do that on in that ordinance. So what ordinance thirteen ninety-one does is add, uh, totality of Adams Street, Wilson Street, and Lincoln Street to that. Uh, what we also added in there was North Cedar and, uh, West First Street, which are kind of the next pieces to the capital improvement plan, and if, if we have funds left over from this project, we could turn around and move it over there and do some improvements on West First and Cedar Streets. There's kind of a, been up there, it's kind of an oddball corner, and it's not a, it needs to be redone, and it's, of course, it's on the list, but um, if we end up having a, a pretty good bid, so, you know, good bids and good prices, then we can shift some funds onto that. So what you're doing with thirteen ninety-one is just adding those streets to our main trafficway, uh, list.
Any questions regarding ordinance thirteen ninety-one? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen ninety-one as submitted.
A motion.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second?
I'll say that.
Councilman McCarty, seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council, Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman by.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen ninety-one is hereby adopted. Uh, next ordinance is thirteen ninety-two, authorizing the sale of bonds for road improvements. Mr. Styles?
The next piece of this, uh, so what we're doing here is authorizing the sale of Geo bonds in the amount of one point five six million for Adams, Wilson, and Lincoln Streets. Um, this is for our charter ordinance, we've chartered out of the, the requirement for public vote for all debt, if debt instruments, uh, and so with that, we can, we can do this by simple action, by ordinance. Uh, so we've done this numerous times, uh, it's kind of how, how the council has chosen to do that in the past, so. Uh, if you're good with moving forward with this, this just authorizes the sale of those general obligation bonds, doesn't actually sell them, but authorizes the sale.
Alright, any questions regarding ordinance thirteen ninety-two?
Our bonds, I mean, everything okay with it? No problem that you see?
Yeah, I don't think there'll be an issue. We've got, I put, uh, Greg Barnberg's municipal, or his finance of Kelly, I'm thinking of, his analysis, mill levy analysis. Um, so the financial analysis in there, uh, I had him put in maintaining some of the, uh, local option sales tax money in there to continue paying for that, um, he's got it projected out there, you know, how the mill levy would be impacted by that. Uh, it, very rarely does it actually go up that, as much as it's predicted, that's kind of, I always think that's sort of a little bit of a worst-case scenario, but um, that could be where you would be at theoretically. Uh, so there could be a, a, a situation in the future if sales tax revenue was down, or there was other issues that came up, that you could potentially have to raise the mill levy in order to make those bond payments. We will make those bond payments. We're agreeing to do that, that is, that's gonna happen. Um, so how we've typically managed that in the past, uh, is, you know, we've, we've managed, been able to kind of, uh, maneuver around with the mill levy and then with the sales tax dollars to kind of keep that at a, at a targeted level that makes sense for us, so. Pretty confident in that. We actually generate closer to three hundred and fifty thousand, uh, a year in that sales tax fund, so there's more room there than the two hundred, just trying to be conservative there. Um, and then we also, we're showing a, a bond reserve on there, which we are required to have, doesn't necessarily, it, it doesn't always end up showing up in that spot, um, so there's some things with that too. But you should take note that it could result in a tax increase, a property tax increase, if something were to go wrong with those other two sources.
Which you don't anticipate.
I don't anticipate it unless something completely unusual happens, uh, we generate that, and we've pretty consistently been generating sales tax, so. We could, and we could also shift other things off, and to make room for that, so we could find other ways to reduce our spending to, in order to accommodate that.
Any questions regarding ordinance thirteen ninety-two? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion for the adoption of ordinance thirteen ninety-two as submitted. Councilman by, moves. Sir, second. Councilman McCarty, seconds. Any further discussion? If not, we'll poll the council, Councilman by.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance thirteen ninety-two is hereby adopted. Uh, we are now moving to the third part of this, which is consideration of the municipal advisor agreement with Raymond James and Associates. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So the municipal advisor agreement authorizes Raymond James to act as our municipal advisor for this sale. Uh, our, our normal point of contact is Greg Barnberg, um, he's been the city's advisor for many, many years. Um, does an excellent job, is best in business, highly recommend. Um, so, uh, Greg and I were walking through this process. Our initial plan for this is to try to do a private placement of this, uh, debt instrument. Uh, so we would offer it to banks initially first, uh, and they would have an opportunity to do that, to, to pick it up, and they would all, what would happen is basically a, a bid process, they all can, they'll see it, and then they'll all submit a bid, what's the best interest rate? Uh, and then we evaluate from there. Uh, if those come back and, and Raymond James feels that we could do better in the open market, then we would pivot and, and turn that into a public offering. Uh, the, the downsides to public offering is that there's more, there's more toss involved to it, because we'll have to go get a bond rating. Right now, we got an upgrade a couple of years ago, um, but we'd have to go out and get another one, it's, it does, they don't basically keep, they, they don't, don't keep, I guess, or whatever, they have to do it for each bond, sure. Um, so, you know, if, if we were to come back with the private placement that's higher than anticipated, we'd shift gears, do a public offering, uh, get it in the public market, see what we get there, and then kind of move forward. Uh, Greg handles this entire process, it's very painless, pretty turnkey. Um, Danielle and I sat through a bond rating call, it was a couple of years ago when we did that. Greg was very helpful with that as well, uh, I would highly recommend if we're gonna issue this debt, that we use Greg's services, um, and so this, this agreement puts us in place to do that.
For those of you that are relatively new to the council, uh, Mr. Varnberg has saved the city well over a million dollars in, uh, in renegotiating our debt in the past when interest rates were favorable. And so he has been invaluable to the city, and I jokingly refer to him as one of the non-negotiables that we have, uh, when, uh, when Matt came on board, I said, you know, you can change just about anything, but, uh, you can't get rid of TWG, and you can't get rid of Greg Varnberg, so. And I don't, didn't hear any arguments from him.
You'll get no argument from me on that.
So so, yeah, so, uh, we are, uh, in a place then, there was, there's no questions that we would, that I would consider a motion to, uh, accept our municipal advisor agreement authorizing Raymond James, Greg Varnberg, to act as our municipal advisor.
Oh, my goodness.
Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman by, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And finally, in this section, we have resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two, we're gonna skip back ahead, uh, back to the future.
Yeah, that's how they, that's how they came in, so they got numbered weird.
Uh, and we're gonna provide for the underwriting and sale of the debt. It names Triplet Wolf and Garrettson as the bond counsel and Raymond James as the municipal advisors.
Have anything to add other than that, that the plan is to do that private placement and then see how that goes, so.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman by, seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, poll the council, Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman by.
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two is hereby adopted. Um, and now we are moving on to something entirely different. And that is consideration of ordinance thirteen ninety-three, creating the H dash S Hospital Zoney District. And before we get into this, to this topic, uh, since, um, Councilman Wilkins works for the hospital, is this an area where he would need to recuse himself, in your opinion, Andrew?
Probably, it's probably a good idea, but then that would require, if, if it passes, the mayor will have to vote favor.
Well, I'm prepared to vote.
Okay.
Does he need to leave the table?
No.
Okay. So you would, uh, you would abstain?
Yeah.
Alright, so, Mr. Styles?
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Planning Commission had a hearing, public hearing on April twenty-fifth, uh, to consider some proposed changes and create this new HS Hospital District. Uh, we had no negative comment at the public hearing. Mark Rucker, the CEO, is here today, came and spoke on behalf of the hospital, uh, I said, they're, they are in favor of this proposed change, they actually suggested that we suggested that we make, maybe look at that, uh, with the situation with Harrington Clinic and possibility that maybe somebody else would want to come into the community. Of course, we have vested interests in the community hospital. The public building commission is the title landholder uh, for that. And so we have a, we have a vested interest to make sure that the Hillsborough Community Hospital continues to be a thriving institution. So, uh, at that public hearing, um, planning commission had no negative comments, voted unanimously to move this forward to the city council, which is why it's here today. Uh, thirteen ninety three, it would create this district, outlines the requirements and allowed uses in that. So, what happens is, um, all references to hospitals, uh, which are already in the code in other areas. So it is allowed currently in some residential areas, some commercial areas. Uh, those will be removed in any hospital that anything, any organization that operates as a hospital by definition of the code would have to be still in the H S district. Now, the hospital itself isn't there now, right? So they would, they would be in place before this passed. So technically they're grandfathered, I guess, is the way you, the way to think about it. Um, we would ask them to rezone the hospital. Um, it'll actually be the public building commission that will make that request. So, you will be making that request as the public building commission in the future. Yeah. So there you go. Um, it's kind of interesting because of the technical ownership of the hospital and how that's structured. So the requirements in the H S district, we modeled them after the commercial industrial district. So the height restrictions are still forty five feet, can't build anything above that. That's what all of them are. Uh, there's minimum lot size of two acres. Uh, there's parking signage, other restrictions, and those are really tied and modeled after what are in commercial areas. There's nothing that would prohibit or create a problem for the current hospital in this change. We also put in there medical laboratories. And so there's a full suite of services that happen that are tied to a hospital that really do belong in a hospital. Uh, the important thing to remember with that is that, uh, it does not prohibit a dentist office, for example, from doing x-rays of your teeth. That is a laboratory type service, but it is also part of a normal function of a clinic. So this does not impact clinics. It doesn't impact dentist's office, basic things like that. Really what it gets down to is inpatient, um, surgical services, things like that. Uh, those will be prohibited in all other areas except a hospital district. Um, one other important thing to note that this does not prevent future hospitals from coming in. It just sets up a process that they would have to go to in order to set up a hospital. Um, so we're not restricting trade or restricting that. Maybe we're just saying that if you want to have a hospital, you got to have a hospital district. And so there's a whole community process for that. We have a public hearing, uh, much like we did to change this regulation. So that would, that set, that sets up an opportunity for a community discussion about whether or not it's a good thing to have a second hospital coming. So it doesn't restrict it, just sets up that sys- system. For as far as the financial impact, it's pretty minimal. Really is just creating that community dialogue. Uh, planning commission, in my opinion, the planning commission has done its duty. It's weighed this issue. We've had multiple conversations about it. Uh, we had the public hearing. Commission found it's in the best interest to move forward with this. I don't see any reason to recommend not moving forward with it. So what we're, what we're recommending then is to move forward and adopt, uh, ordinance thirteen ninety three and create this new hospital district zoning.
Any questions? There was a lot there to unpack, but, uh, but, uh, at the end of the day, it, uh, it keeps us focused and keeps, as a community, especially, you know, where it belongs in the, in the area of planning and zoning and, uh, being thought, well, a well-thought-out community. I've lived in other communities that, uh, kind of willy-nilly in terms of their development and, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense to have stuff scattered all over the place like this. Plus, we want to be supportive of, of our hospital, as, as Matt said before, because again, we have not only a financial interest, but I would venture to say this community has a strong emotional tie to our hospital. So, okay, hearing no questions, I would consider a motion to adopt ordinance thirteen ninety three, creating the H dash S hospital zoning district. Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we will, uh, poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
I've seen.
And the mayor will vote aye. So ordinance thirteen ninety three is hereby adopted and the district is created. Next item up is setting a special meeting for Monday, May thirteen at seven P M. At Blue J Lanes for the purpose of receiving community feedback on the potential of the city's ownership of the bowling alley. Mr. Styles?
Yeah. So we've talked about this a couple of different times and I, at the last, at the last opportunity, we had this discussion. It was, I was given direction to set up a public, public, uh, event so that we could get some feedback from the public with regards to the city potentially owning the bowling alley and kind of what the importance of the bowling alley is to the community and how we should move forward with that. So, uh, I talked with, with the folks at the alley, Clint Seibel is the, the main person who runs it. Uh, that night is actually the, um, Monday Night Bowling League's final meeting of the year. Um, so they meet at six thirty, uh, but seven o'clock would be when we would open up our meeting. Uh, so there would be plenty of people there that are active users of the lanes and they could get some feedback from them. Of course, we want to also invite, uh, the school district. They are active users of the, of the, uh, of the lanes. And then Tabor College also uses it quite a bit through its Kelly student services, student, uh, student activities. So they use a lot. We're going to make sure to invite them and also the general public. We would run some, some advertisements to say, hey, let's, let's have the general public come out and tell, tell us if this is a good idea or not. Of course, the bowling alley currently is owned by H D C Hillsborough Development Corporation. Uh, they've made some requests that we consider this. They have made out, they have, have taken the opportunity to try to sell this privately and haven't had much luck. I think that there's sort of a vested interest in, in making sure that it continues to exist on Main Street and that it continues to be a bowling alley. Um, and that's, I think the intention is to find out if the community agrees with that statement. So, uh, if you set this up, what will end up happening, we'll publish it as a, a special meeting because you'll have one, hopefully more than a forum there. Um, and then you'll be able to, to open that up. We'll have five minutes taken. It'll be kind of a formal thing and there'll be an opportunity for people to just kind of talk about it. So, anytime more than three of you are gathered, we have to have a meeting. So that's what it'll be. Yep.
Hey, any questions?
So, since it will be a special meeting, could we, I guess, actually pass some type of resolution or would that have to be, still be done later on or anything like that?
So if you were to take any action, it'd have to be specifically listed on the agenda to do so. Um, I, I, unless you want me to do that, I'm happy to add that to the agenda, but I was not planning on it.
Okay.
Generally speaking, you know, the purpose of this again is to get feedback and not just to, you know, to take immediate action, but, but to deliberate and to, to, to listen and be open to, uh, to people's input. And I think what, uh, my experience has told me is that even though we've opened this particular time slot up for people, once it's happened and it's reported on, we will continue to get feedback. And I think we would want to make sure that we're considered, you know, and then that was the purpose of this, right? Is to get, get people's feedback. So I think, uh, I think we would not want to take action. That would be my recommendation. So I need a motion to set the special, uh, meeting for Monday, May thirteenth at seven P M. At Blue J Lanes.
Oh, my God.
Councilman McCarty, Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have item seven, which is another resolution, twenty twenty four dash zero three, authorizing an application to the K dot T A grant program. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this was a, a late addition and that's why it's numbered funny again. Um, so what this is, is a, an application, uh, Darren Newfield put together the resolution. It's a resolution authorizing us to submit an application to the K dot Transportation Alternative Program. Uh, it's the same program we use to build the hospital trail. Um, and so it's a, it's a grant program, uh, through K dot for bike trails, hiking bike trails, sidewalk extensions, that kind of thing. Uh, the intention with this project would be to build a, uh, a hike and bike trail extension that would go and pick up on Third Street where the, the, uh, new potential fire stations can be considered uh, and take it up north, wrap it around, turn at the, uh, pharmacy, man, brain's going to, turn at the pharmacy head up and around to Sonic. Um, there would be an opportunity then to catch the, uh, Menonite Housing Project should that move forward. It's a grant participation. Uh, so we would have, there will be some participation on our part. I don't think that K dot has actually set what that's going to be just yet. It seems a little squishy to me yet, um, as far as what they would be requiring for us. Uh, sorry, I got somebody trying to get in. Um, and then there may, maybe an opportunity for us to use the Kansas Infrastructure Hub, uh, with the, this, the legislature set aside a bunch of money, a hundred and twenty-two million, uh, this last session to use as matching grant, matching funds for different grants for cities, smaller communities. Uh, so maybe I will actually tap into that, um, to help pay for part of the matching portion of this. So then it would be a hundred percent grant. Darren didn't give me the, I don't have an updated cost. And so, uh, you know, I understand if that's, if that's an issue. What we're basically saying right here is that with this resolution, we're authorizing us to put in an application for that. So, I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have an updated cost as to what that would be or what our portion would be. Um, we could always, uh, you know, submit the application, get it selected or not, and then we could reject it if we felt like it was too expensive. So there's always an option. Uh, but in order to submit the application, we have to have the resolution.
Do you recall what the, what our portion in terms of percentage was on the hospital trail?
It was twenty-five percent. If I'm remembering right, but I'm, I may be wrong. I don't know. I didn't do that one, so I don't.
I'm, I'm thinking it was twenty.
It might have been twenty. It's usually in that range. Um, I've never seen one up to fifty of them. So.
Pretty confident it was an eighty, twenty grand. So, there's a lot of, uh,
Yeah, it's been a little squirrely with their grants because of the bill money. So.
That's, that, that, that is true. Okay. So what is a pleasure to the council? Would, uh, would there be a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three? Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion?
I do have, if I,
Sure, absolutely.
Um, I did, because you mentioned sidewalk extensions as part of this. I did have a constituent, uh, voice. I guess not much of a concern, well, I guess a concern. Uh, they live in Willow Glen and there's no sidewalk from Willow Glen into town. They just mentioned when walking into town, they have to get, you know, in the road and just not the safest. Would there be any way? And if not, or maybe come back to it, because I know, you know, mentioned it's a very difficult area to put a sidewalk in. So I didn't know if it would be possible to try to put that in there or if it would have to wait for something.
I don't know that I would put it together with this one because they're so far apart, um, geographically speaking. That is, that is an option that we could do that in the future. Um, this grant comes around every year. And so, once we close out, if we were to get this one and closed it out, then we could turn around and reapply.
Okay.
Uh, the deal with Willow Glen, and we, we kind of talked about that, uh, the, the right away there is really narrow and it's got ditching on both sides. And so, uh, in order to, to really put in a sidewalk that gives you a sufficient separation based on the speed of the road, it really needs to be back behind the ditch. Um, in order to do that, we would probably need to get, well, we know we need to get some more right away. Um, couldn't, not, not say you couldn't do it, that would, you know, you could make some things, make that work. It'd just be a, it'd be a lot more involved.
Yeah.
So if that, you know, if that's a priority, then definitely move into looking at that in the future. But I, I can't tell you how much that would cost, you know, what, but I know we would need more right away and, but no, I think it's, it's a great idea. I think that there are people that would definitely use it. They've attempted to put kind of a shoulder on there. Um, I don't know that that's real effective. I don't think I would want to be walking on the shoulder at forty-five mile an hour speed.
Yeah.
Um, so it's not the safest, safest thing in the world either. So, yeah, there would need to be a little bit more work, but you certainly could come back and do that.
Okay. I would say, so just a while, we've talked about this a few times before we go on the councils or it's something that we have discussed. Just so they know, you know, we have talked about it.
It might be in the, I think it is actually in the hike and bike trail plan that we have that they, that F B H has put together. So, we'd have to look at that. I know we need to get some more right away. That was kind of the big hangout.
I know, it's pretty narrow.
It's super narrow right there. And then, you know, then it turns into County Road on the other half and there's some ownership issues, that's the whole thing. But it, not say you couldn't do it. If you really wanted to, we could definitely move to do that.
That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions? So we have a motion and a second. Hey, uh, at this point, we'll poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
All right. Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero three is hereby adopted. Uh, now we are into a, uh, discussion item opportunity on food truck regulations. Mr. Styles?
No, I, I spoke it at the last meeting and it came to pass. That's sort of how that works. Um, yeah, I mentioned it kind of in passing at the last meeting that maybe we need to look at that. Um, and sure enough, after, after that meeting, we had a, a, a food truck show up at the Ball Diamonds and park on city property without any permission, without seeking anything and just started selling. And they were invited there by one of the coaches from one of the baseball teams. It was a harmless deal, but still one of those things like, okay, well, now we know that this is, this is going to be an issue. Uh, and then not but two days later, I got a phone call from another person who was going to set up at the, uh, tennis tournament that got invited out there uh, and heard that we had some regulations, um, which are not really adequate to, to really deal with this issue. Um, and we got into a vigorous discussion about what that needed to look like. And, um, I did not disagree with them. I don't think that what we have now as a transient vendor really makes a lot of sense for food truck vendors. So, so like, like I mentioned, we have transient vendors, which truly built for like door-to-door salesmen. Uh, people come in, they sell, it used to be the vacuum cleaner salesman, right? But this, you know, whoever comes in and wants to sell door-to-door stuff, they have to come to us, have to do background check. They can get a, they pay a fee and they get five days. They can do it consecutive days to set up and do that in the city. So that really doesn't work very well with food trucks because typically what they want to do is set up one time. They may want to set up five times in a given year, but they don't really want to do five consecutive days in one spot. And the, the fee didn't really make sense. The process was kind of clunky. So, uh, what I did is went out and looked at a lot of different options from others' communities. This is not a new issue. Uh, so we were able to find some really, I think, pretty decent regulations that already exist. Um, and, you know, we're just going to rip off and duplicate that. There's no need to reinvent the wheel. Uh, so what, what I've got here, I, I kind of laid it out for you. It's not in ordinance form. It's just sort of how, how we, how I would project it to look within the code. The kind of the highlights with it, there, there are two options in, in how it's listed here, uh, for licensing. So you could get a daily license or a yearly license. Ten bucks a day or fifty bucks per year. Um, that's a little bit on the low side for the yearly permit compared to some of the others. Uh, my thought was we probably want to encourage food trucks. That's, if that's not the way you want to do that, you want to set it higher, that's totally fine because that, that is higher in a lot of other communities. But I think a kind of a low barrier to entry is probably good. Just people are going to try it out. They may not come back. Who knows? So, um, we have all the required intr- uh, information that you need to protect the public interest and public health. That's a big issue. We want to make sure that the, whoever comes in here is not some, some kind of fly-by-night person who's doing something out of the back of their car and, you know, not really regulated. So there are, uh, things that the state issues for them. We require all that. We do background checks. Uh, we really want to try to safeguard people. Uh, we don't want, we don't want that. We don't need that. Uh, and it also would ensure that the sales tax generated here will be collected here and, and admitted for this, for the community. So, uh, the way it's set up now would prevent the use of public rightaways unless it's a city-sponsored event. Um, we would have food trucks. One of the things that is kind of common within the food truck regulations is limiting where people can set up. So, what this does is limit them to non-residential areas, but I also prohibit them in the central business district, the C one zoning. So that's basically just downtown. Uh, the thought there was that we've got locally owned restaurants there. Probably not a great idea to set up a competitor right next door. I get free industry, but at the same time, it's a brick and mortar store. They're barbers. I get free industry, but at the same time, it's a brick and mortar store. They're part of our community. It's probably better that we keep them a little bit further away. Uh, I would note that the splash pad is not in the C one district. It sits outside of that, so it wouldn't prohibit somebody necessarily from coming there. They would just need permission from us to do that, so. Um, that was, that's probably the most controversial thing in here is like, do we really want to limit it out of that district? Um, I, I would kind of recommend that you do that. Um, I also have a, a section in here that prevents them from setting up for five consecutive days on a single property. After five consecutive days, you're basically setting up a business there. It's, it's starting to look more permanent. Um, so we want to kind of prohibit that and make it, make that something that's, uh, temporary. Uh, and then I did put exemptions in place for the city owned food truck, um, exemptions for vendors at the county fair. Uh, when the county fair is happening, uh, the farmer's market and the arts and crafts fair. So we, we have an agreement with arts and crafts that. Uh, they will regulate all their own food vendors. Uh, I don't want to get in the business of regulating the Kiwanis Club sausage fry. That is not where I want to be. Um, they do a great job. I'm a Kiwana. I love it, but I don't want to be regulating that. I'm gonna let the arts and crafts people continue to do that. I don't think there's a need for us to do that, so. Um, what this does let us do, uh, you know, if there is a community event, um, a city food truck could set up at that. Or there could be, um, another food truck come in, uh, they could set up wherever that event is. So I was thinking kind of in, in terms of like. Cruise nights, uh, those could potentially be something where you'd want to set up a vendor. Uh, we don't have a local restaurant open. Somebody wants to do that, so. Uh, other communities have exemption in place, exemptions in place for school grounds. I don't know that really, with the college here, I don't know that we really want to do that, um. You know, with the college, I, I, they would probably have, they had a hu- a food event recently, so. I think it would probably be in our best interest to continue to try to regulate those a little bit, um, but if you wanted to put that in there, that's not uncommon to see something on a school. And then, uh, we did put a fine structure in place, so there's, and there's a due process for revoking a license. Uh, there, there's a process for all that, so, uh, we're trying to make it, you know, clear, concise, adequate. But not real burdens. I think kind of a light touch is something here and trying to strike that balance is, it's tricky. And I know there's been a lot of other communities where the, the argument comes from the locally owned restaurant, that why are you letting food trucks and? I get it, um, and so that's why we've tried to sort of strike that balance the way we did with this, but. Again, this is just a discussion piece, uh, if there are things that you want to see changed, other things that you want to see included. This is just a starting point, so.
You mentioned cruise night.
Yeah.
Um, and obviously, none of those businesses are open. For most part, or.
Yeah.
What would be their way that we could maybe allow food truck to come in and sell just on cruise night? Or like a temporary license or something?
So, we could say that's a city sponsored event. Oh, falls.
Okay.
Falls in the exemption, you can make them have, yeah, it's either city sponsored or it's a, they're not.
What about coming in on Tuesday after?
Right. Originally, we kind of thought about that too, like what? Could we limit it to when the local ones aren't operational, but then we don't want to make, we're not want to wanting to track. So, that changes. Some people are here, some people aren't, the days aren't always the same, so. Uh, I think that you could do that by making it.
City sponsored.
So what do you do when, uh, people invite their own food truck in for their events and you don't know anything about it?
Well, that, they would have to come get permitted. That would be.
And that's not the place they're gonna ask people to holler, right?
Yeah, we would have, yeah, if that happened, that would be what it is. I think once you get the word out, most, most reputable food trucks will want to be a part of that process. At least that's been my, that's been my experience with them. I mean, there's not a ton of those that are kind of.
I'm not too worried about the food trucks. I just don't thank everybody and their brother or fight people then to the answer. We don't know about it.
Right, yeah. Well, yeah, we have a public health and safety interest, making sure that those are. Are adequate, right?
But I would tell you too that, uh, it seems like every year I get somebody knocking on my door trying to sell me something and. Of course, the first thing I ask them is, where's your license? And, uh, oh, I have permission. And I said, uh, no, you don't have permission. And, uh, you know, so there's always somebody that's gonna push their luck.
I know, I get, used to get that too, but I'm a policeman down. Do you have a permit? Well.
Ronald.
So I, I haven't seen food truck permits, so will it say on there? What designated area they can be in, cause it says they can be on a single property, so just want to make sure they're not saying, oh, well, yeah, I'll be. Know that little area on D Street by the igloo.
Oh, right.
But then, you know, later in the day, they just moved down by adult general or something, so.
It's tied to one spot.
Yeah, so it'll say on the permit, where, okay. Uh, then I know you mentioned in here about the general liability.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, does that cover, you know, that they're up to date on, you know, because like different. Insurances as far as like. Car insurance, you know, something like that. Let's say, you know, they're. You know, since we're inviting the men, we don't want to have a situation where they hit somebody's car or damn some property and then, oh, well, we don't have the insurance for that, so.
Right.
So just want to make sure we, is there a way that we can get a record of that as well? Put in as.
Or you want to like to have like car insurance?
Yeah, just, or whatever applicable insurance for food truck, I mean, I'm so.
I think general, I don't know. That's a fair question. I don't know how you would insure.
Give that general liability.
General liability.
You got general liability insurance, you have that in there already.
Okay.
As a requirement, I would, they would need to have. Vehicle insurance on it as well, and I didn't see it, but I would imagine it's probably in there too. Those are definitely.
And, I mean, I know this is just the beginning, but as far as how many food trucks would we even, would we? Well, uh, would we put a hard cap on it or is like, well, if we have, you know, a lot of food trucks that do want to come by. Will we just allow as many that'll want to come or would we?
Well, that's, I mean, that's a fair question. I mean, is it something that you want to cap the number in town or is it, he's good.
Yeah.
Uh, we're only gonna issue three or five or whatever.
Yeah, and I just.
Good.
Yeah, I just don't, and again, I don't know how that would even look for community of our size. How many food trucks should we allow in town either?
I don't know how many you could expect.
Yeah.
That's a fair question. I think it's a Tabor event, uh, was last weekend. They had three, three or four. Um, so it, it wouldn't be unheard of to necessarily have that, but there is a cap on the number that. Uh, one person can have.
Yes.
And then I think. There was one on the number, that could be on one place.
You know, this is one of those things too that I, I think, um, capitalism generally sets the, sets the standard. I mean, they come and. They make money, they, they come again if they don't make any money. Probably won't.
On a regular day, if three or four came to town, they probably wouldn't make much money. You know, without a big, it had to be a big event probably.
Right.
Yeah.
So there's, there, I guess my point on that is, I don't want to be overregulating.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. Yeah, I just, I'm just wondering.
That's fair.
No, it's a great question. I mean, because at the same time, we absolutely want to support our brick and mortar businesses, you know. Those are the people that make it happen every, every day, every week.
So, I mean, I would just hate to, you know, we get like four or five, you know. Mexican themed, you know, food trucks in and, you know, it takes away business and so, but again, we don't want to regulate too much. And it could just regulate itself in the sense of, as mentioned, if there's like ten here, they're probably not gonna get much anyways, so. Well.
Yeah, the only restriction I have is three, uh, no more than three mobile food units may be operated at the same time on any single property. So. Doesn't cap the number and say you could have three on this property scrapped up. But if you wanted to, that'd totally be, yeah, that, that'd be fewer permits we'd have to issue if that ever came up. Which I'm always in favor of fewer permits if we can avoid it.
Because if we say that one person can have up to three permits, I mean, per, three permits for each vehicle. I don't know, up to three, because if we allow three people, I guess up to nine per, I don't know, does that make sense like?
Capital nine.
Yeah, because that would bring three people and if they have three food trucks that piece, then.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm just.
Totally fine.
Bit more than that here, I don't know, or we can just.
We can put it in there. That's, you know, if you want to cap it at, I guess, nine total community wide, yeah. You're good. That's, that's not a problem at all.
Okay.
It's not to say that you couldn't adjust it in the future.
Yeah.
To make it, you know, if that was not enough, you know.
Okay.
You know, then we can add to it someday down the road.
Trying to think how that would look. Yeah, I don't even know. Nine, nine of them in one time. It would be a thing, but yeah, I mean, yeah, definitely could. It'd be like, uh. Just think like a Cinco de Mayo celebration or something like that jumps to mind like you.
Yeah.
Could potentially have that. Yeah, I'll put it in there. If it's nine, nine, are we good with nine?
Yeah, that serves.
Okay.
That'll be good.
And then that, making sure the additional insurance coverage.
All I got.
Yeah, it's good stuff. Any other comments or questions regarding this issue? So we will, uh, we will let you make those changes and bring it up at a future meeting.
Yeah, we'll have Andrew button it up into an actual ordinance and take a look at it.
Button down, button up ordinance. I love it. Okay, so now we are ready for our land bank meeting. Is that what I'm hearing or seeing?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's move, uh, from city council into a land bank meeting, which looks a lot like a city council meeting, but it's not. It's a land bank meeting.
Take your hat.
And so we're gonna all switch our hats around backwards and rally had it and, uh. First item up in our land bank meeting is approval of our April two, twenty twenty four land bank minutes. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I accept a motion to approve the minutes that submitted.
Over the show.
Okay. Your second. Hey, we have a motion by Councilman Wilkins, second by Councilman By. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Now we have vouchers, which I believe was the actual purpose of this meeting. Was to approve vouchers in total of one thousand five hundred and forty dollars and fifty four cents. We have, uh, taxes, second half taxes, and the matter, the amount of two hundred and twenty five dollars and fifty four cents. And we have a hundred mowing, uh, bills for areas one, two and four. Their invoice number one, three, seven, for thirteen hundred and fifteen dollars. For a total of fifteen, forty, fifty four. Any questions? Hearing none. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I would just make a note that, um, the tax issue is still kind of ongoing with, um. Um, Andrew and I had talked about it and we are, we're actually in the process of replating the A M P I building, which I think will make it a lot simpler. Uh, with regard to taxes, uh, we are not paying all the taxes for the land bank out of the land bank right at this point. We're paying some of them out of. Uh, the general funds with the thought that. Well, we're preserving some cash within the land bank, but also that we, we'd have a little bit more flexibility if we need to go back in and, and do something with the board of tax appeals. Or, or some other issues that may come out of that. We're kind of paying them under protests, so it's. Also, to be determined with that, uh, the statute I think is fairly clear, but. How the county interprets that is not, so. Uh, we, we agree to disagree until the board of tax appeals makes a rule, so.
Okay. Um, any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of five, one thousand five hundred and forty dollars, fifty four cents.
We have more.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We will now move back into a council meeting and I would like to interject at this point. We have, uh. We have next an executive session, uh, that we will, uh, taking action on here shortly, but. And then we have several other items, but in the interest of fairness to those that are here, in case they don't want to stay. Through the executive session, um, I wanted to make, I wanted to read a communication that I received this morning from, uh. From Councilman Driggers. So this is addressed to the mayor of Hillsborough and the Hillsborough City Council. Uh, dated today, May six. Is that yesterday? Being yesterday.
Yesterday.
Serving as councilman for the city of Hillsborough over the years has been an honor and a privilege. Recently, my life circumstances and responsibilities have changed. And as such, feel like I can no longer serve the city in the capacity it deserves. For this reason, I must resign my seat. We accomplished a lot in my time as councilman, and I know that the city is in good hands for the future. Thank you for trusting me in this service, Brent Triggers. So I have, um, this and then copies for Mister Stiles. And can pass those around to the council. Um, you may have, may or may not have noticed, uh, Mister Jeff Jorgensen has joined us for the last several meetings. But I have asked, uh, Jeff in the, uh, with the understanding that, uh, this resignation was forthcoming. That, uh, he would fill out, uh, Mister Drigger's term. And so like any other appointment, the mayor appoints, the council approves. And so, uh, you know, with the, uh, if the council would be of such a mind, we can either do it now. Or we can wait till our next meeting and take action then if you'd like to think about it a little bit. But, uh, I'm recommending Jeff Jorgensen to, uh, serve out, uh, Brent Trigger's remaining term.
Might as well do it now, I think.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is there a motion?
I'm gonna come also.
Councilman.
With that.
Okay.
You ready?
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman McCarty, a second by Councilman By. To, uh, accept the nomination of Jeff Jorgensen, and if you would supply your address to Danielle, you probably have it already. Uh, we'll get that in the minutes and, uh, we welcome, uh, this opportunity. Uh, so that being said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Welcome to the council, Jeff, and, and, uh, we will, if you would go, like to come up and, and, and set yourself at the table.
Get a chair.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah. Big time.
Thank you and thank you for the opportunity to, to serve.
So, uh, uh.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I, I know it throws a kink at it, but do you want to swear, I mean?
I think I have it.
We should do it.
Yeah, we're gonna do it.
Yep. Yep, pardon me. I'm sorry, we.
Don't.
So, we're gonna ask you to swear or affirm as, as you wish.
Okay.
Uh, and there's an oath of office that you will take.
Take a picture, send it to her.
Send it to the guys.
It's not printed. I'm sorry, I can print it, but take just a moment.
No worries. And there is a method to my madness because now you'll get to sit in.
Oh, okay.
Welcome to.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah.
I would note that I had Danielle look it up. Brent was on the council for nine years. Wow, filled out somebody's, some, an expir- an expired term, expired term.
Why don't you come up here, Jeff? And Matt, you're gonna get a picture, please.
Either one, Jeffrey or Jeff.
Can we get the flag in the picture maybe?
Yep.
This is, this is the first for me.
But just, uh, just to keep the record, uh, clean, this is exactly how Brent came on the council.
Okay, sounds good.
I, Jeffrey Jorgensen.
I, Jeffrey Jorgensen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Looking a little about myself speech, so we don't.
A little about myself.
A little about myself.
A little about myself.
Yeah, I was gonna be doing that, but, yes, that's fine, um. I uh. Almost ten years to the day now, I have uh, lived in Hillsborough, we uh, relocated from Colorado. And uh, relocated here for a job at the Mennonite Brethren Foundation. And uh, what I do there is I oversee our investment uh, portfolios there. And also work with state gift processing. Have uh, a senior in high school that'll be graduating this year, and uh, so then we'll be empty nesters after that. Um, we have five children, and they're all. Gathered around the United States, exactly, so, yeah, any, anything else, any other questions?
No, I would, I would like to say, you know, just uh. Uh, I, I really enjoyed Annalise, his daughter that's a senior in high school, and she's good friends with my, with my uh. Lisa, but she has just uh, they both, they both are kind of fierce competitors in, in whatever they choose to do. And uh, she uh, she was uh, awarded a very significant scholarship.
Very blessed by that, yeah, it's awesome, really awesome.
So, welcome to the council, and we're looking forward to your service.
Great, thank you, looking forward to serve.
Okay, well, we've got that item uh, taken care of. So now, if uh, you have somebody set up to make the, the executive session motion?
I don't, but I've got it provided there.
If you want me to, it's the first time I've done this. I move, do what? I move that the city council recess into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected. Personnel pursuant to KSA seven, five, dash, four, three, one, nine, B, one, for a period of fifteen minutes. The meeting will include the city administrator and the city attorney. The open meeting will resume at.
Seven fifty seven.
Seven fifty seven.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, Councilman McCarty, seconds, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're now in executive. During executive session. And we are now to the point in our meeting where we're going to ask for our city administrators' report, Mister Stiles.
Okay, uh, just a couple of updates, uh, golf superintendent, we had our. We've hired Brandon Higman, uh, he's our new golf superintendent, started today, um, and he is getting a four-day crash course. He, he has a landscaping background, he actually an arborist, uh, trained arborist. And uh, you know, wants to get into turf management, he's, he's got a lot of passion, and he's got a lot of energy, and he's got the right skill set. I think we can teach him what he needs to know technically, um. So I'm, I'm excited to have him on the team, he'd be a great asset for us at the end of the day.
That depends on whether it's a fast.
Well, yeah, it was tricky, I had, I had. Seven or eight screener interviews, and I was not feeling very positive, um. Happy where we're at, though, it came out okay. Uh, speaking of recreation, I'm filling in as the interim rec director, uh, Jerry resigned, Jerry Vandoz resigned on Tuesday, uh, thirtieth, um, so. This is, is a bad time, correct, but, um. Baseball and softball schedules, we're getting that all worked out, rosters, got those, I think, tied down today. Uh, we've got a ton of other summer things happening, I gotta hire summer help. Gotta make sure maintenance continues to go forward, we had our last two. Uh, softball and baseball games, we hosted state tennis last week, uh, so it was a busy week, um. Managed to get through that, and I think we're starting to do that, I'm, I'm turning around now and, and gonna be putting out, um. The recreation director position about a lot of people show some interest or suggest people. Um, we'll see, I don't know, I've, I've got a few things, uh, I'm, I've talked to a few other people about that. It's, you know, there's never a great time for turnover, this is really not a great time for rec, uh. I'm just gonna try to keep it together, and I've got a lot of great people, and they've been very helpful when we can, and I'm gonna take advantage of that, and. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna just continue to move forward, till we can get something in place long term.
If I could just interrupt just a second. To support Matt, who's, as you can see, got a, got his hands very full. As constituents may or may not bring this particular topic up to you. Please assure them that we're doing everything we can, and Matt's doing everything he can, as quickly as he can, to get this. Get this uh, handled, and get schedules out and get all this stuff, cause it's, you, you know, he's getting a lot of, of uh. Interest, shall we say, from constituents that are. Contacting him, so any way that we could support Matt in the community would be, uh, would be appreciated. Okay? Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Mennonite housing, we had our second community meeting last week on the thirtieth, um. Uh, we had some sketchy weather there, we were under warning and stuff, we actually had a really good turnout, it was completely different people from the first time, which was good. Heard from Byron Adrian there, we talked a little bit about it, I, we're all really bullish on this application, I think it's gonna score really well. Um, and so we're, we're kind of, we're kind of pushing forward as this is gonna happen, so that's, that's how we're looking at it. Uh, we should know something, I think he said in June, late June, early July, um. And then if that, if that is a go, then we will go full steam, uh, we'll get pushing, so, really exciting. Uh, the container homes is another thing there, we've been working with them to get the infrastructure in place, um, they, they've got some upfront costs, which we've, we've talked to them about. I propose maybe we could look at maybe a developer agreement to help sort of spread that cost out a little bit for them. Uh, they're still thinking about that, uh, that would be something that you guys would have to look at, and of course, we'd have to sort of negotiate with that look, it looks like. You know, normally, when you have infrastructure, you're doing a housing development, you maybe, you would look at special assessments, that's how you put in roads, water, sewer, that kind of thing. It's not really the case here, there's not an opportunity to do that, and so this might be, this may be a path forward for them. Uh, and then also allow us to, to recover some of those costs from, uh, we don't wanna be out, out those costs. Um, enterprise fleet management, working with them on the replacement vehicle schedule, so there's a lot of weird timing with builds and different models and things with that. So I think we've got the things split into phases, we've got kind of the first chunk, it's gonna go in, then the lease vehicles are a second chunk. Then there's the rest, so there's kind of this other group that. Um, the model years are different, we've split them up to where they're pretty well equal Ford and, and GM products, um, I think it's gonna be okay. With that, it's just a little bit trickier than we thought, I don't know. As far as when we'll start to see stuff, um, we're, we've been kind of working through that process, and. We're gonna bring some more stuff to you guys to look at that here, uh. Hopefully, late summer, we'll start seeing stuff, but we'll, we'll, we'll have some more discussion about how that looks. Uh, pool and splash park, that is something that is on top of everybody's mind, when it turns warm, everybody wants to get going. Uh, we got it filled, pool's filled and is warming up, uh, we caught a lot of grief last year, our heater went out, and um. Everybody, the first two weeks, it's cold, I'm, no kidding, it's cold, I get it, um, and swim team starts practice, I think, in two weeks, and. It's gonna be cold, um, there ain't, there ain't anything we can do about it. Replacing that sucker was gonna be like fifteen grand for like two weeks of use a year, it didn't really seem very smart to do that, and. I never had a heater in the pool when I was growing up, so I think it's carried. We'll still get complaints about it, but it'll be fine. Uh, most of the complaints will come from inside my house, so that's how that's gonna work, um. That'll open up the Memorial Day weekend, the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, twenty seventh, uh, we'll have that going, we're actually planning on doing the. The splash pad around the same time, may be able to open that a little earlier, depending on the weather, it's been cold, so it really. Wouldn't make a lot of sense, we talked about opening it up the first weekend in May, but. Uh, it just didn't make sense weather-wise, uh, we went to turn it on, there's a few things we're gonna have to fix, which is typical, um. We were just crossing our fingers, like, maybe we flip the switch and it'll go. Um, so they're out there, they were out there working on it today, I think it'll be ready to go pretty quick, uh, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at, we'll kind of evaluate. We're saying Memorial Day weekend, we open it up, we're just giving people extra time, it'll be fun. Uh, we're also gonna have an event, KSN is gonna be doing a road trip across Kansas, uh, this year, and they're gonna stop here in Hillsborough, it's on the list. Uh, so we're gonna have on, I think it's June seventh, it's that first weekend in June, that first Friday in June. Uh, we're gonna roll the city food truck out there and have free hot dogs and stuff, they're gonna do a live remote, they're gonna have sponsors, it's gonna be kind of a fun day. So we'll have a little bit more about that, we just put it on the calendar today, so I'll have more about that when it comes up, it'd be kind of fun. Thought it might be a great opportunity to dedicate our new signs, those are supposed to be finished, uh, so we'll see how that goes too. Okay, yay, yeah. Uh, last thing is I'm gonna be out of town on May twenty second through twenty ninth, vacation day is my wife's birthday, so we're going out of town, so. Um, I think that's everything I had right now, sir.
Any questions? Okay. We're now coming to our final opportunity for public comment, is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, we'll close that second opportunity and move to council comments. And Jeff, for your information, every, every meeting, we give the council members an opportunity to provide any input from. That you might have gotten from constituents or any concerns or anything like that, that you may have picked up from the, between the last meeting and the. And the current meeting, so. So, Councilman By.
Do we have to appoint a new, since? Councilman Ger- or.
Yes, we will.
Okay. That was fine.
Yep, we will.
He was in that role.
Yep.
He needs a job.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Councilman McCarty.
I've heard some employees that they were happy about the new enterprise system. They happily tell me when I saw them. I didn't bring it up, but they just showed me, hey, that's a good idea.
They're happy to get out of the seventy-eight Dodge Dakota. Big step up for them.
Okay, Councilman Wilkins?
Only comment I have is, I know a lot of people that are gonna be happy about the street project. So, excited for that.
That is exciting, actually, those, those projects are really some of the most visible projects that we, that we do. I mean, you know, yeah, people uh, are happy when the water turns on and, and, and all of that stuff, but. That's all buried under the ground, you know, in the electricals hanging off of poles and. You just don't see that so much, but the streets, we're driving up and down those streets all the time, and when we're hitting those potholes, that uh, that tends to uh. To create some uh, concern, so that's gonna be, that is gonna be excellent.
That's probably the main complaints.
And again, we're gonna gi- give you an opportunity, if you'd like to s- make another comment.
I have nothing to say at this point. Be sitting here, right, so. Um, just.
Well, I appreciate you rolling with me on that.
That's great, that's awesome, and it's great to be here, great to serve, and. I know some of you, and I'll be getting to know uh, some of you even better, so, thank you.
We will uh, we will be uh. Uh, introducing you to uh, and, and Ronald went through this recently, but uh, you'll get an opportunity to go out and tour the different departments. As your schedule permits and meet the employees and see what, see what they do, so you'll have a better understanding of what goes on day to day. Out there, so, and I have another uh, another uh, book for you that is out in the car that I want you to take.
All right, great, I've already, already dived into the uh, other one, and it's interesting.
All right, is there uh, any other? Uh, business that needs to come before the council? We've had a busy evening, and I appreciate everybody's service and attention. Hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.